I'm Mr. Superintendent, can I press you please for our agenda please?
Yes, uh, we call the roll.
Chairman Floyd, Vice Chairman Harrison, present. Ms. Teresa Henry, present. Ms. Callie Dale, present. Mr. Matt Wright.
Present.
Superintendent, it's oral.
Right.
Alright, we have a forum. Next item?
Next item is approval meeting minutes, um, July 13th.
Anyone have any comments, changes, questions, submitted to this meeting? No change. Does anybody have any objections or requests? During that, can we have this placed on the board's agenda or anything?
Yes.
Next item?
Next item is opportunity for public comment.
Do we have anyone? Do you have a card?
You guys knew that you would never be able to get to another meeting without me and where is my staff? And my microphone? Here, I'll go to the end of that. Last week, when we had many, oh, blue bells in 9584, five point drive, thank you. Lakeland. Um, last week, I painted you guys the Toyota Toyota report regarding the mold situation at Lakeland Elementary. Did you guys get a chance to read that?
We've read it.
Yeah, we've already read it.
We did. We did. You were not, okay. Got a few questions for you. Um... Ted already goes about this. Back in June, I sent him an email with like eighteen questions after I had read all of that and then investigated the number of people that had been out there dealing with it, blah, blah, blah. Um, my question is, is do you, A, do you know if the air conditioning was on the day that they did the air quality report? Air or heat, does anybody know? Okay.
I do, I do want to point out again, as I've pointed out before, the building was not in our custody at that point.
Correct.
So we've raised records, which we showed in county schools' records.
Correct. It's still our problem. We inherited this problem. That's the whole reason why I'm addressing these issues and letting you guys know, you know, what I feel has not been taken care of. I'm not trying to say that this was Lakeland issue. This was Shelby County. We had not made a district at this point. In fact, Laura, she was the one that reported the, the problem as a parent before we ever even had a school board.
I just wanted to be clear that if you ask this board, you've asked me these questions, if you ask the board questions about what happened in Shelby County schools, when Shelby County schools had control of the building, I didn't want to give the impression that that's something that they should know or wouldn't know.
Well, if they read the report, they either know in the report or not whether it stated in there that the heat hair was on. Correct? It didn't say that it was or wasn't. Right, okay. Um, do you know, according to their report, if the heat hair units were even inspected?
We are at two minutes and ten seconds. Would you mind?
Okay. Do you know answers from anybody? Okay, has there been any more leaks or repairs or mold problems since 2014? Marc, did you know of?
I don't know.
Or Toyota?
Yeah, you guys had met about that? Is this correct, Ms. Melton, you and Dr. Merrill met?
Met? No, talked on the phone?
Okay, but you've had these discussions, is that correct? You've had these discussions, is that correct?
Had this discussion with Mr. Oral.
I guess that's what I'm trying to add.
Yeah, I guess I'm confused. I mean, I'm just gonna be real plain about this.
Or not. Here's what I did not understand before. He is actually an employee. You guys are part of the board.
That's correct. And part of his job is to look into these issues for us and report back to us.
Did he address the issues with you guys? Did he?
Here's what I, I feel very comfortable with how Dr. Oral has handled this situation. I understand that you're here to try to make a point and to, I'm just gonna be real frank, grandstand. And, um, it gets a lot, to be honest with you.
How dare you interrupt me like that?
Let's maintain a word with the meeting and not interrupt each other.
You have met with Dr. Oral and Dr. Oral has clearly stated to us as a board that he feels very comfortable with this problem that's been handled. I personally, that's all I need to hear, is that our superintendent has looked into this issue, that he feels like the issue has been resolved to the best of our capabilities, and he's comfortable with the safety of the school. As long as he can clearly tell me, as the school board member, that that's what he feels, then I'm completely comfortable with that decision as it stands.
Okay, so you don't believe in investigating any further?
And, Ms. Melton, let me, let me respond. As I did before, the part of my job as the board employee is to look into these things, is to answer concerns, as I have with you. Um, every, we have discussed leaks in the school multiple times. The times that we have paid to have those leaks addressed has been on the monthly expenditure report that are all on the website. I've answered you those questions. I sent you a list of when that work was done. I, we have detailed records of...
No.
We did not discuss that work.
You did not send me an email. I had zero.
I apologize.
I haven't answered any emails or anything.
I apologize. We talked about it.
I would love to have that.
We talked about it.
Okay, I also asked you, had the heat hair filters been, um, changed?
We've only had two minutes.
If so, you know, had they been that way?
I'll find, take this off line after the meeting.
Yeah, I'm pleased. That's what I wanted to say.
I'm tired of this part right here. I'm tired of the private conversations and nothing getting accomplished. Now, if y'all want to stone wall me up here, stone wall.
Ms. Melton, you're probably not legal.
He's accusing me of grandstanding up here. I don't do this. I've been dealing with this since April. You know, I, I don't, I don't understand. Y'all talking to a citizen this way. I do not understand it at all.
I'm trying to be as respectful and trying to let this report conduct business. I'm asking if you will discuss your issues after the meeting so that we can not...
No, I'll be back next week. Power on this page. I'll come back for two minutes, every single time, until y'all realize there is a problem there that was not addressed. Period. The end. You know, if they didn't think so, the news media would not be contacting me to these stories. So I'll go so.
Thank you, Ms. Melton.
My pleasure. Uh, Dr. Oral, will you continue later through our agenda?
Yes, are there any other public comments?
Justin, sorry.
All right, next we move into our report section. We'll start with the chairman's report.
Well, I, I will, school starts next, next Monday, so we're a week away from school opening. Obviously, I came in late. There, there's been a lot of drama surrounding, you know, the opening of a new building, all these things. But I don't want that to take away from what we've accomplished as a school system during this first year. We've had a remarkable year, and, um, I, I think it exceeded everybody's up here's expectations. It's been... Dr. Oral, this is probably, I don't want to instill any of your thunder, but the TCAT scores were unbelievable. We, we heard today that Lakeland Elementary is designated a reward school, that the school system is a exemplary school district, that our TCAT scores put us, uh, I think, first in reading and first in math in the state, and second in science. And those things speak for themselves, and, and all the credit goes to teacher, to faculty, to staff, and Dr. Oral and his leadership. Uh, but I, I don't want us to lose focus of that. Those are, those are remarkable accomplishments. And not only are they remarkable accomplishments, they were done in the first year of operation when there was a lot of unknowns as we were going into this. And that's, that can't be lost in all this discussion. It's, it truly is a remarkable thing. And I know there's been some talk about, well, we're only one school and you can't compare, and those things. But Dr. Oral, were there any other one-school systems that made it in the top 10 that you're aware of? I don't believe so. That's a two-edged sword. You know, you realize that we have one school and that, that counts, we have one school that does really well. But the other side to it is, if we have one school that does average, we're not in any of these categories. Uh, so that, that sword cuts both ways, and I don't think that should take away of any of the accomplishments that our, that our system has achieved. So I, I'm proud and honored to sit before you today with that information and with that, I yield the floor to Dr. Oral.
Thank you. I guess I'll go with my report.
Yes, please.
Yeah, obviously, that, that's the big news here. Uh, we met with the, uh, the teachers who returned to school today and just appreciate each of the board members, um, sitting in on that presentation and getting to share that moment with the teachers and, uh, the faculty and the administration to, to, when that news was first announced. Uh, we're obviously very, very proud of the teachers. They worked hard. Uh, they went and out there and worked with an intentionality that leads to those kind of results. And they prepared the students, and, um, as I said to them, they did the right kind of work all year. So you don't know when you're doing the right work, if you're gonna result in gains like that, results like that. But I do know it's, it's a great pat on the back for teachers in a profession that does not get enough hats on the back. Uh, as we discussed this morning, you know, the flip side of that is, you gotta start right now, trying to be even better next year because that's the name of the game, and the name of the game is getting the kids what they need. Uh, but I do want to point out something that I said to the teachers this morning. Those accomplishments are great, but for me, by far, the most significant accomplishment this year had to do with the culture of the school that's been created by the school-level leadership and those teachers and those parents and the kind of support of the community and school board, um, that we enjoy. And, uh, I think I'll tell you, it feels different this year, and I think that's, those are the kinds of things that can help support our achievement. So I want to thank the board again, um, for that support that allows that kind of environment. But, you know, the, my kudos go to the school building and the leadership and then those teachers. As I've said many times, at the end of the day, it's the teacher, it's the teacher, it's the teacher, it's the teacher. And that's what it takes to have, you know, students that learn. So it's been very exciting to share in that news. And, uh, and I do also want to point out, um, that three of the other exemplary school districts in the state of the 12, uh, two of those were our educational partners, in Bartlett and Arlington Community Schools, and the other one was in Germantown. And, um, Arlington had two reward schools, Donaldson and Arlington Elementary as well, so there are two schools where our children are attending, you know, in Lakeland, that were designated reward schools. Every school where our children, our children are zone in Lakeland is an exemplary school district. And, uh, I think it supports many of the things that we've said before. Um, we're gonna have successful schools here, and frankly, I think it's gonna draw people to the Lakeland Arlington area, and, um, they're gonna wanna take advantage of those kind of schools. So, um, I think it's very exciting. I think it's exciting, obviously, for Lakeland, but I think it's exciting for our region. And they have neighbors that are also high performing is, is good for our schools. And that kind of competition is good for our schools, very, very frankly. Everybody trying to be the best, and that's what it takes. So, uh, I think it's exciting for sure. I'll just finish up my report, I guess. Uh, one of the, a few of the things that we are going to be addressing uh, kind of over the next year are strategic compensation, working on a plan. I've mentioned this before, but we're gonna start with, again, some intentionality, working with the principal leadership team to find out what are the things that are important to the teachers themselves in terms of how they're compensated. Some of those may include, um, advanced degrees, but also may include professional development or school leadership or, um, you know, specific training in different areas. It could include, you know, extracurricular things. It may include the number of years worked. You know, those are the kinds of things that tend to go in that next. And we really want to hear from those teachers what that should look like. Um, we're also working on a technology master plan, or at least in discussions, and working with Ms. Carroll and the rest of the staff about how to prioritize the technology needs. I am happy to report that, uh, the network project has been completed, and, uh, I believe the statistic was that our network now is four times faster, I think, in terms of, of gigabytes, now that it's judged, than it was before. There's a notable difference. Each teacher has an airport in her classroom, is in her classroom, and, uh, you know, to support, uh, just the incredible technology in front of us that we've got, uh, from the school and from the ETA. And so that, that's exciting. The teachers, all the laptops, the new laptops have been distributed. There's a lot of excitement that we need to get back. Uh, so just in addition to that, these teachers are excited to come back and get some new things that will help them be better teachers. I'm also happy to report that we've completed our, our, our final budget upload to the state on Friday uh, that was accomplished with our new accountant, and also did a tremendous amount of work from the city of Lakeland, Finance Director Jessica Mills-Bob, um, who's very helpful in that. And, uh, we are all balanced and ready for our audit, and, uh, you know, everything looks good. So financially, we're a good footing, as we mentioned. Academically, obviously, and, uh, just a lot of, a lot of excitement. So it's a good day. I'll, I'll give the detailed financial report next year, which will include the, that's, sorry, next week, when we do the, uh, the, uh, the year-end financial information spread.
I'm sorry, I messed you up. I think I got, got us out of order there.
It's fine. It's working right.
Okay. Carry on.
Next is the TLN representative update.
Uh, something very quickly. I promised everybody, you remember Policy 6.405, who's the one in regards to self-medication? Um, I did get a very long explanation, a very long legal explanation that I'm not gonna get into in detail, but I can make copies of this. Essentially, um, there is just state law now that says, uh, if you have certain conditions, you can self-medicate, uh, in schools, uh, can help with that, and those were two that are specifically mentioned. Um, so I've got the law. I can turn it over to, uh, Mr. Patterson if he's interested in seeing this, but, uh, it's TCA 495415. But again, I've got copies of this, or I can have copies made to pass out to the board. It addresses it specifically, so there's a reason for it being in the policy. It's law.
Next is ACS Board liaison update.
See, Arlington Community School had their big, narrow meeting on July 28th. The superintendent went over the capital improvement projects. Um, most of them are, have completed or are nearing completion. Um, the, at the middle school, security doors, they were just starting those to help make the campus there a little more secure to keep people from swarming in front doors and entering the building without checking into the front office first. Um, they expect that to take about a week to complete, so, um, with all of their registering students, um, you'll see some of the construction underway, but it should be completed before school starts. Um, at the high school, uh, everything's completed, um, except for the field house, which they're still doing some last-minute work on that. And, uh, Superintendent Mason says that all projects are scheduled and on track to be completed before school starts. See, uh, Mr. Goforth, uh, gave a presentation on academics and accountability. One thing that they're starting in their system is a new logo, support, innovate, and engage. That's, um, they're using that above the teacher level and the student level on how to engage the teachers and the students moving forward, how they're gonna support the teachers and students, how they're going to innovate further education, which is, um, basically your foundational skills and how to make them better. And then engage, uh, they're looking at, um, and there was some opportunities for the teachers and the children as well. And, uh, in my report to y'all, I gave a bunch of different, um, bullet points that he touched base on. There, there were many of them. So, um, I'm not gonna take this time to go over them, but just, it is in my report. She also went over the 2015 priorities, and they're looking at the five-year strategic plan, focusing on customer service, looking at what makes ACS unique, define what community means in ACS schools, gaining stability in attendance zones, district of perfection, and the five-year CRI plan. We're looking at re-person and all that as well. Ms. Mason did ask that the board realign the election of the board chair to follow this school year. So instead of the elections being in December, it'll be January 1, and I don't know if that'll affect our central office here. She said that they, of course, they have to go into the state department, remember printing of documents, we're printing of new checks. Um, I think, you know, that's something that affects the central office, that may be something we want to look at as well. Just leave that to Mr. Superintendent. Their HR report, uh, they filled 44 positions over the summer, and 28 of those were teaching teaching positions, and 16 were classified, and they still have four vacancies left to fill. Financials, uh, very end of year was not completed yet, since Superintendent Mason did not give a financial report. Uh, they had several, um, policies, and I gave the page and lines of, um, changes that they were looking to make money to the policies. And, um, anything else, like previously, I've sent y'all those policies without, you know, changes highlighted as well. And those were all sent to their consent agenda for their next business meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Heather. Next item.
All right, now we're now moving to the discussion portion of this work session, and we start with an update from Southern Educational Strategies. Jim Mitchell took a bite of both here, and I just wanted to address two topics, actually.
Good evening, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's good to see you again. I'm gonna update you on two quick items, and then I'm gonna ask you just a minute for our person privilege. The contract to purchase the 94 acres for the future construction of the Lakeland Middle School is now to the last little details. Your executive committee has been working very, very hard on this. I think I told you prior meeting that some of the summer vacations or attorneys caused some delays as we were working through this. The goal is to get all of this right out this week and to work a contract for this floor to consider a true meeting next week. So that's what I'm gonna do. Meantime, somebody had a chance to come out and take a ride around some of the property. Uh, we're glad that you were able to do that. Uh, if you got a chance to see what a lovely heavenly wooded site it is right now and the potential for fulfillment, uh, of wonderful school location, I think you can see that in your visit. Thank you for taking me down to do that. I'd like to thank you for driving one of the vehicles, Ms. Harrison, for bringing us others. I appreciate that. So, uh, you're well on the way to moving that project forward, and your architects and engineers are ready to get back to work as soon as you have the final contract for the purchase. Another project that is on the horizon for this community is the plans to re-roof and to repair or place uh, certain HPAC units that Lakeland has mentioned. I don't want you to think that that has been put on the back burner in any way, but we'll forward that at the same time. So that's a very preliminary discussions with engineers and architects and with some firms that deal with management, how to begin to look towards the best way to achieve uh, as much energy savings as you can as you make these changes. So that's a project for next summer, but the work is starting now, and Superintendent, I'm sure, will be writing you a recommendation in the very near future, hopefully in September, to look at a design firm to get started with that project. So that's a very preliminary meeting, and I want you to be aware that that is what we want. So I'll stop at this point. It's ended the questions.
Any, any questions for Dr. Mitchell?
Discussion meeting for work session.
Just a quick question. Uh, that's great news. We expect to have a contract by next meeting. Will, do you anticipate us having a contract review before the meeting, or will that be first round?
I'll surprise. I anticipate Superintendent will have something to review with each one prior to meeting. Just have some... If all, if all goes as planned this week, uh, nobody gets sick, nobody has a cold, and nobody's out of town. Such as those things that can happen.
Any further questions for Dr. Mitchell? There you go.
Just a point of person privilege. I want to thank you as a Lakeland citizen for the work that you as a school board have done. It takes all of you to achieve the success that you've achieved. Folks, it really is momentous. Somewhere in Tennessee, there were other school districts in the past that were on that exemplary business. They're no longer there. Some of our district's people have always fallen off at the White House districts in this state. Four municipal districts in this one county to achieve that recognition in the first year truly is historic. And it takes all of you working together, and it takes the community working together. Parents, community, the school board, the superintendent, the staff, the faculty at the school, and the leadership of the school. I don't know whether everybody understands how difficult it is to get on that list that you have gone. It's the top of the top. And it is the kind of information that brings people to the community if there's suitable housing and development available for those people who want to live, where schools are achieving their results, you've achieved. So I hope that the community can get this news and understand how important this is and how really amazing it is that you not only have achieved the academic results, but on the shift to one other area. We had some people who said that municipal school districts in Shelby County absolutely would not work. You cannot afford to do it if you can't afford the operating costs. They had a lot of that information that came out from the... Plans are underway, discussions underway. You all have proven that you can operate a municipal school system. You can not only operate, but operate in the black. All six municipal school districts have operated in the black this year. All of them. And that's a testament to conservative, or to conservative leadership, to fly this decision out. So I think you've proven a lot of people wrong, and what you're also gonna say is you're gonna prove to a lot of people this is the right place for you to come to. So thank you very much. I appreciate what you said.
Thank you, as always, Dr. Mitchell. Next item.
Next item is discussion action on feet schedule for use of school facilities. I left this there just to really preview the board. This is something I don't have ready, but I'm working on. I expect to have it to you this week. Um, we have a draft, and it's one of the ready to present. This is something our policy, our policy says this will be presented to the board. Uh, we have not had a lot of, um, times that we've had individuals rent a facility, but we obviously want to be prepared for that and have looked at some other models for that, and one that I'm comfortable with, and I'm fairly comfortable with. I'll give that to you as soon as possible. Um, and I know Chris Patterson being some of the legal side of that as well, so we'll have that to you, and hopefully you can prove it at the next meeting, could be my intention, but that one I think we look at today. So I want you to work that. Next item is discussion action on the cell tower lease. Uh, this is a project that we've been talking about for several months. And, uh, just for the public, to remind the board, you authorized the use of a consultant to work with this and to work with David Moore, and, uh, and we have been involved in the negotiation with the tower, uh, the tower firm.
Tower Venture.
Tower Ventures, thank you, Tower Ventures. Um, I'm placing a cell phone tower at the back of the school. Uh, essentially, that, that contract I just received via email today, we're gonna be, so I don't have much time to look at it. But it's essentially, um, it's a, it's a, it's a venture for us that we make at a minimum, according to contract, eighteen thousand dollars a year in revenue. Uh, and that's, that's, if only the basic ten of the leases figured out, there'll be, uh, other fees as more, uh, companies use that. So there's opportunity for additional revenue. Uh, so, uh, once we get kind of a final look from the press, uh, and both from you guys, we are intentional to execute that, and then they start Tower Ventures, start guiding that through, uh, the city, a brutal process as well to get that constructed. And that would be in the back of what the elementary school, uh, in the area of the, uh, one of the bus, like, uh, area. So, are there any questions about that? I know you guys have had much time for you, and I also want to know, I'm not expert in cell tower leases, uh, so if you have any specific questions, I can, uh, I allow to begin on the consultant to take those questions and then we'll bring it back to you.
I have a question, and I don't think you're not forcing to really answer this, but I'm more or less curious. Uh, will the tower have to go through the planning commission with those? Well, it's, uh, yeah, aren't there certain, like, the towers have to look like a tree or, you know, something like that when they're building like this?
It will. It's the applicant, this is actually an option contract with, with a lease on the back end. We just like, they will move forward with that, but during that process, they do have to obtain all of that, that's their obligation.
Yep. Very good.
Any further questions or discussion on this issue? Are we comfortable moving this to our consent agenda?
Not on the consent.
Ms. Harrison says not on the consent agenda, the regular agenda. Next item.
Uh, the next two items are, uh, more recommendations from the state on, uh, policy adjustments that have to do with federal funds, uh, allocation and distribution. And the first is discussion action on policy 2.8 expenditure of funds. And if you look at the, um, policy that's been updated and highlighted, this essentially says the director of schools should belt federal grant expenditure and cash management procedures that comply with all federal laws and regulations. And, um, we, we are comfortable that we've been active within federal laws and regulations, uh, but this is something that I'll give you an account from Jessica Salis would, would work on specifically to make sure we're compliant. I went through training on this, uh, this summer, and it was one of the reasons I felt like it was, uh, urgent, uh, an urgent personnel decision to have, and how that's why I didn't spend a little more time overseeing this. But as far as the policy goes, these next two, these are, as Matt said, are, these are changes to stay off, but not really choices in terms of, uh, policy.
Any discussion on this item?
I, I just have a quick, um, comment or whatever. In, in all of our policies, we have changed director of schools to separate. So we want to do the same, just change here. director of schools to see if we want to do the same, just change here, make them consistent.
I think we should.
Yeah, we should too.
Any further discussion on this item? With that clerical change, are we comfortable moving this to the consent agenda? Any objection? Hearing none, we'll move this item to the consent agenda. Next item.
Okay, the next item is policy 2.805 purchasing, which also has to do with federal programs, and talks about conflicts of interest in federal and purchases using funds. The director will minimize the time elapsed between the transfer and disbursement of the funds once the expenditure is approved. And then the next section is, again, has to do with conflict of interest. No person officially connected with or employed by the school system may participate in the selection or order administration of the contract supported by a federal award if he or she has a real or apparent conflict of interest. Everybody goes on to clarify what that means, so.
Those are all legal requirements, I believe. Any discussion on this item?
Does the second sentence basically define what officially connected means? Is that the end of it?
Yes, yes, that's how I read it.
Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, are we comfortable moving this item to the consent agenda? Hearing no objection, this item will be on the consent agenda. Next item.
Next item is approval of Lakeland School System organizational chart, which is also in the, posted on the website at this point. This is not even required by policy, as I understand it, but I just wanted to put it before you formally, so we could adopt it formally, which is something that bothered me that we had not gotten done during the initial startup, and so we submit this to you, and also just for clarification to the board, it just basically organizes who the, like, the organization chart does, who answers to it in the system, and most of them either go through me or the principal. And as it makes a view, that there are a few kind of dual supervision cases where it's Lockhart and I supervise individuals directly, most notably the plant manager, the bookkeeper, and then also school nutrition. The one that we have not added to this that should be added is our lead staff coordinator. By the time we finish this, we did not add that, but that would go under Ms. Hughes, the instructional specialist, and she's going to directly supervise that, so it doesn't require a retraction, but definitely, but on the consent agenda, we didn't have a requirement for that. What do you have?
Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, any objection to carrying this to our consent agenda? Hearing none, this item should be carried over to our consent agenda. Any other business that needs coming for the board?
I have a favor.
I do have one question. There was an item, I think, on our July agenda, the school support organization contract. Mr. Patterson?
I guess it was.
Where are we on that?
I, I think that we could probably put that, we could probably bring that back Monday.
I mean, I'm, I just.
No, 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 my concerns, I sort of had some follow-up conversations and discussions, and satisfied my concerns, and frankly, just forgot to bring it back, and said, we can certainly put that one down.
So we'll tentatively, we'll add that item for next week's business meeting. Any other items or discussions that the board needs to have? Any announcements?
I have lots of announcements this week.
Yes, thanks a lot.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, just super proud of the work. I mean, it was wonderful news this week. It was fun. I received a, a call from a friend of mine in Williamson County that, I'll be honest with you, we don't talk about school things, there are always football friends of mine, and he called and said Lakeland number one. That, that was, he said it was the talk of the town in Williamson County. I mean, he read, he and his wife both read a lot about that. That's kind of neat to know that other parts of the state wanted to know who's Lakeland and where are they? And that's always neat, to get those kind of calls.
Without question. And, you know, obviously, and I know Dr. Oral's already mentioned this, but we're proud of our partners as well, you know, we're excited about what they've done, what they've accomplished. Any other announcements that need to come before the board? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn? We have a motion, is there a second? Hall of favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.